Ladies and gentlemen, in the unlikely event of the fire alarm being activated, please leave the time all used in here as designated for fire exits. Before we move on to the assembly points, which is exchange of flags of career, which can be assured over proper instructions.
Before we start, can I just, because this is our first meeting in the new year, can I just say that every member, officers and any members of the public are very happy and peaceful in the year. Can I remind those present, both for this meeting and the next ordinary council meeting, that these meetings are held in public and not public meetings? I would also like to emphasise, these are key public meetings. Can I therefore request that everyone present, including the public, treat these meetings accordingly, which will enable the business to be dealt with effectively. The use of social media or filming for important proceedings is permitted during council meetings. This does not extend to the filming of members of the public, and anyone wishing to film the proceedings are also the typical directive to the very satisfaction of filming children without the express permission of their parents. Can I also ask permission of the councils to allow the parlour type to transcribe the proceedings of the two large rooms in the chamber? Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Chief Executive.
Well, I'm just going to recall that apologies to the council, Peter Brown, Dave Hanratty, Ruth Ashfield, Kevin Morrison, as mentioned, although any further apologies. Thank you.
Freedom of role of association, can I ask councillor Moll, please?
Thank you, Lord May. Can I move the recommendation of the previous, the City Panel, that each of the following organisations be included and be described on the City Council's role of association, in recognition of their contribution to the City Liberal Government's rights? The Liverpool Palette of Services, established in 1766, the Liverpool Palette of Services is very much at the heart of Liverpool's history, providing vital training and incentive services to the shipping industry using the River Mersey. As part of celebrating 250 years in existence, it is only right that the city recognises the way being done by the Liverpool Palette of Services. Kind, kind almost need no introduction, as I'm sure every person in this chamber is aware of the incredible work that they've done over the last forty years. Every year, Kind welcomes thousands of children, homeless people and families across the city region to help them cope with many forms of disadvantage they face. The way it's been done by Kind is more important now than ever, and I think I can speak to the whole of the chamber when I do say I am incredibly proud who are receiving this team, and I hope this recommendation can be included.
Thank you. Is that seconded? Do any of the members wish to speak? Councillor?
Thank you, Lord May. Just on behalf of the Greek group, the fellow authorities who took on their free job of association, the particular Kind, they've done amazing work, great work, these children in the city, they've done a fantastic job, and their sense of theirs, they're a great worker, so.
Councillor Ken?
I too support both the nations, particularly like to mention Time. When I read this, when the judge came around, I thought, I'm sure we've done this. Because the last time, we didn't recognise Stephen himself, and he was the first person to say at the ceremony which we had, that of course he is the magnificent king, some of whom have been connected to Time as long as he has. And just I know where this is going, because this is the first time I've been to a free celebration, but it sounded like it was happening in a ruckus. It was great, it was a good charity, we did have it here, we had it in the place of Walthamstow, not Walthamstow. Walthamstow, so an absolutely unique organisation, but I'm not very proud of the fact that it's called the organisation.
Councillor Alford?
I was all about to say, I think we also have to be honest, we have this work of royalty, we're opposite to this, we're not doing things like this. We're coming forward and taking some of the burden, and some of the work that we use counting, we'd like to, we'd like the orders to do, and those agencies are very sensitive on the work. It's not just about the values, it's really, we do recognise this sort of organisation, which is in the way we do, with the dignity of it, it's all right.
Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Alford? Sister Nana?
Thank you, Lord May. I can move the recommendation of the Queen of the City Panel, the following citizens to be awarded the title of Citizen of Money. Brian Lawless, out of here. Brian has had nearly forty years' working title to see in the voluntary services across the north of the city. He's been recognised nationally with service to the city by being awarded the Emmy, and it's only right that he's recognised by the city. Doctor Chris Wells. Well, the man, Doctor Chris Wells, studied at Liverpool University in 1965. After qualifying, Doctor Wells went on to become the first doctor in the UK to specialise solely in pain medicine from 1982. When he took over the Walton Centre, he maintained the eminent position of resuscitation student with the Liverpool Foundation and the Liverpool Pain Clinic. Many thousands of people have benefited from Doctor Wells' pioneering techniques, which have transformed how doctors across Europe control drug delivery systems and pain management programmes. Alan Williams. As the original manager of the vehicles, Alan played a key role in making them the band that we know and all. From allowing them to perform in his coffee bar, the Jacarante, to personally driving them, to hand made, to perform, Alan was influential, it was influential figure in the history of the most successful band in the world. Kenny Tam. In 1970, he became a member of the SEAC Association, a volunteer organisation bringing together the oldest Chinese community in the world. At the age of forty-six, he became the youngest chairman, and now, two decades later, is the longest standing chair since it was founded in 1906. Kenny has transformed the association's building into a vibrant community centre, providing a safe and warm environment for the Chinese community. Banny Roger O'Hara. Roger has been a tireless campaigner and activist in his community, for his city and for the oppressed people across the world. His work has been fully American, secure and projected one status for many sides, and SRB company for his beloved Dingle. As a proud trading minister, he helped organise supports for the ANC South African people during the times of horrors of the apostates, thank you, Lord May.
Is the motion seconded? Do any of the members wish to speak, Mr Ken?
I can support all of you, but I want to talk about one person who I know particularly well, and share everything that has been said about Roger O'Hara. For four years, I was a councillor for a war known as the Dingle, which no longer exists, which didn't include all of Roger O'Hara's beloved Dingle that has just been described. Like remember, being elected for the new war, I was already a councillor to St Michael's, a councillor to the Dingle, about midnight, and unusually for an election night, I might have gone and had a few drinks, just to celebrate, and then at ten o'clock, the following morning, there was enough on the jaw, for someone I'd never met before, Mr O'Hara. And I probably saw more of Roger O'Hara during the next four years than I did my then-wife, which might have, because she's my fourth wife. I never was encouraged to do that, marrying Roger O'Hara, but he is a tireless campaigner for the Dingle. There was a strength that he wouldn't know about, and it's an issue he couldn't know about. And although he was a very different political party than I own, of course many people know he's actually got some friends after a long time, he would go another end door and work the end of, of a people that part of Liverpool way. So although I don't support a lot of the first politics, as a man of experience who fought for that working class community in the Dingle, he was in a ceremony for so many, and I'm proud of him, perhaps that would encourage others in a different way to follow his step.
Thank you, Councillor Alford.
Certainly, I recall that the councillor who had asked for a primary issue, Roger O'Hara certainly was going to be, and again, I think the chances were, but I had to talk to anybody from any party to put in the community first, I mean, to Mr Ken. But I think the other thing is, looking at this, and I'm through my approach and thoughts, which allows this to people with so many different backgrounds, and I think that was really nice, that it affected a diverse city. But I think it would not be appropriate to particularly point out the work that Doctor Chris Wells has done, has made this city a trailblazer, the centre of experts in medical timing in the world. And he loves the tradition of people in this city, who contributed innovative approaches to medicine, who have transformed medicine to help those people who suffer. And I think this is one of the great strengths of the city. And Lord May, we recognise people like Doctor Wells, but also encourage next generation of Doctor Wells in the city, and nurture more time, and more goes to my house.
Thank you, Councillor Alford.
Thank you, Lord May, for slightly, I've been slightly naughty, but I have been forgiving because I was speaking about an old man of mine, Andrew Wilson, who's which is Roger O'Hara. But I'm going to tell him what he said, and he, he may believe you are right.
It's difficult to marry.
I, well, he's a very old friend of mine and comrade, and I think he's somebody who served the city well. There's three things I think are quite distinct about him, and quite important to record. One, which was very early champion of housing properties and helping people organise the properties of the city, and I think it's important for somebody who's life on socialist, who understands the importance of decentralised participatory politics, and doesn't need the stake in doing anything. Second issue which I learned from him when I first came to the city, where I think he anticipated issues of life, regular, which was a law of order crime, was a working class and social issue, and he was always very clear about the importance of having a truc- with crime, and being prepared to change criminal behaviour. And it was something he was to a fault, and telling them I've learned a lot of lessons from them on that. The third issue which we, which we marked just under a year ago, was his role in basically organising underground for the African National Congress, and also the people from the city who were playing this time in South Africa in the late sixties and seventies, which we marked to the OJ. And it's something that he's very modest about, but would not happen without him, and he made a very significant contribution to the fourth party. So I'm really delighted that he's been ordered this way.
Councillor Alford?
Thank you, Lord May. Again, just on behalf of the Greek group, I'd say your school is even more to the citizens, more a citizen honour. And similarly to you, Councillor, I just want to say the diversity of achievements, the diversity of communities represented in this, I think it's a really good testimony.
Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Chief Executive?
Thank you, Lord May. Move on to the City Council meeting proper, that's all right. Can I take apologies for absence, as reported a few minutes ago? Are there any additional apologies, please? Thank you. Lord May, should be your declarations of interest? And I remind members that you are only required to declare hearings on individuals of peculiar or extrajudicial interests, in which case you may or may not leave, which I enjoy with consideration of the situation, and file any such declarations. But this needs to be first.
Can I advise members that the minutes of the referendum November 2015, minute eighty-one, the amendment to provide a declaration of interest made by councillor Hetty Wood relating to the motion of EU funding being mined, in so far that the declaration was made by the age of employment, and that the amendments are the minutes of the City Council meeting held on November 2015, and the minutes of the extra ordinary City Council meeting held on the nineteenth November. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Chief Executive?
Petitions and statements, Lord May. Can I advise the council that no petitions or statements have been received for proceedings, please?
Thank you. Can we move on to the mayoral recommendations? Councillor Alford?
Thank you, Lord May. The late administration has done all it can to fight off the waste of resources that the government's been putting down to our policies in order to help people in real need in this city. With no one here to be in any doubt about the black hole in our finances, the fifteen centimes to our wages, that's why I think that the opposition sees the council's approval to continue the support scheme for another year. But this comes with the understanding that next year, seventeen eighteen, we will have to withdraw it. We will still continue to help those vulnerable in our communities. We will, as councillors, be there to offer advice, guidance, access to support for those who are in need. But as the financial situation of the council becomes more challenging, it is, Lord May, with a heavy heart. I propose this recommendation be included by the council.
Is that agreed? Item five, may you give the executive decisions, Councillor Alford?
Lord May, it's a license to stand on it.
Item six, again, Councillor Alford?
Thank you, Lord May. Lord May, I think this recommendation needs very little introduction. We must, as a responsible local authority, do all we can to bring empty properties back into use, providing people with much needed homes as well as increase in the revenue to part of the council tax of payments. No other councillor in the city region or in the core cities still provides a twenty percent payment discount on empty furnished properties. Very few offer a hundred percent two month discount on empty on furnished properties. The removal of these two discounts will generate over two million pounds a year, at a time when our bodies are under such pressure and resulting in a set of future safety requires, I am. Councillor, I give you the recommendation to support that.
I think that was item nine, councillor Saxton's camps on empty property, but anyway. Is that agreed, members? Back to me again.
Lord May, it's just testing, you know.
Item six was, er, adding answers, all things.
Lord May, I don't want to.
Can we move on to parts of the council, changes in committee members, or voting, so I say, Lord May? Councillor Dean?
Thank you, Lord May. Can I move the changes in the pen, please, attached to the notes?
Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Item eight, appointments of local artists and entertainers in the public, councillor Small?
Lord May, can I move the recommendations that's I was.
Is that agreed?
Agreed.
The thumb nine? Item ten, constitutional issues, councillor Zee.
Thank you, Lord May. Can I move the recommendations from the post in the notes, from the meeting on the twenty first of December, 2015?
Councillor Duncan?
Just helping me to add, I understand the, I was going to move things in by events, and in everybody's, to draw out, in the, in the school.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Councillor Alford?
No, sorry, I was going to speak to my members.
Has not moved your amendments? Seconded?
Sorry, I remember this, just to remove a small number of words. Is that better? The movement of the staff means that other councillors will be able to ask the mayor questions relating to the state of the main aid. Obviously, that is a positive development, it's good to have, to ask questions of the mayor, it is called the most public performance that we have in the council. And so we, you know, work with development, but we think it's an opportunity here to go a bit further. We remove the wording which means only in relation to the mayor's statement if you live this. If we enable it to be an opportunity to ask the questions on any subject, that will enable councillors to get responsive to the questions that are most important to them. So rather than allowing the mayor to fully set the agenda of what gets debated within the council, it gives opposition councillors the opportunity to raise the burning issues in the city, which may not necessarily get raised in mayor's attitude. So just moving a few words to open up the forum a little bit, to create a wider opportunity for swimming. Obviously, there may need to be some, for the final two, because I'm a long, I make a number of questions here, but I think it's a really good opportunity to have this introduced.
Are there any other speakers or councillors who want to add to this part?
Simple, thank you. Councillor Alford, I just only remove this one word, it's the equivalent of the little touch for taking his finger out of the bag. I'm sorry, we're not going to subject the Lord, the elected mayor to a barrage of questions on a whole range of unknown topics, for your benefit or whatever. The mayor will answer questions on his own estate, which is what you've been asked for, and I'm not going to do that now. But no leader of this council, or the councillor or the elected mayor, has ever given the council the opportunity to ask them a free range of questions on any subject they choose. And you've said it yourself, it could be any issue of the day. There's absolutely no way that we would subject any leader of this council to that kind of interrogation. You will have an opportunity to ask questions on the mayor's announcements. You've had an opportunity at every select committee to ask questions and raise issues. You have every opportunity to attend every cabinet meeting and raise issues with the mayor. I don't remember seeing anyone ever there to ask questions, apart from one or two issues, and bicycles and cars. But apart from that, I don't see any attendance for you. You've got every opportunity to ask, the cabinet members and the mayor, questions of cabinet. You choose not to do that. So we reject the amendments, it's a nonsensical amendment, it's unworkable, and we reject it outright.
Are there any other speakers? So voting is for the amendments? All those in favour? All those against? Are there any extensions? The voting for the amendments is seven for, seventy-five against, no extensions, the amendments lost. Can we go on to the main motion? All those in favour? Item eleven, licence in that, two thousand and three, councillor Christine Maddison.
Thank you, Lord May. For us, the council can set the recommendation that the land is not available that tells the city to accept that. But the draft statement of licence and policy two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty-one will be approved by the council members, and we can just wait until the threat, some stuff that's come about, about the government. But what we're doing as a licence and policy, we are going to have a workshop in the future, because although the market is doing to stand licence on the land, and some stuff there, some of us don't. So that's what we're doing in the future.
Is that agreed?
Agreed.
So we move on to motions. Can I remind members that in terms of the time in his speeches, the movement of the motion gets five minutes, and has the right to be five, five minutes. All of the speakers get three minutes, and two minutes extension to be agreed by the council. Motion, item number twelve, and I am by councillor Alford, to move the motion standard of the mayor's name.
Thank you, Lord May. Lord May, colleagues, since I took control of the council in 2010, every union act has to remember to cruise inside the initiative funding. Regardless of what your politics are, we all should want to make our city a better place. And every union act has to talk about how the local government finance partners may see the parts of use of just that. This year is the thirteenth of a regional cycle, which has seen our funding reduced by fifty-eight per cent, a loss of almost three hundred million pounds to our council and city. The impact of this is profound, and seems having to reduce the services we provide, for example, to five thousand K users, as well as the loss of three thousand council staff. Just as the mayor predicted, there's no white race that's going to come riding over the hill to save us, to seven settlements now to pay to that. But just as the mayor also assured, Liverpool is a tough, vibrant, dynamic and optimistic city. And as a city, we've achieved so much despite the government's evil, unfail cuts. The mayor made five pledges, each one has been met and exceeded, and so much thanks needs to go to our council staff and to our partners who have made this happen. But it's worth recognising how much has been achieved because of the changes we, Labour, introduced to this council, including the biggest one of all, a pan to attitude, and how that compares to the previous administrations before us. When the Liberal Democrats lost control of Liverpool council, they stepped into Downing Street, and Liverpool continued to pay the price. The opposition parties like to pretend somehow the financial position of this council is all Labour's fault. They seem to willingly misunderstand what's happening, because deep down, they know that this administration is not only prepared to make very difficult decisions, but also it's making Liverpool a better place. But imagine, just imagine what we could have achieved with three hundred million pounds more money. Imagine what we could have achieved with three thousand more staff. Imagine how many more jobs and friendships we could have created. Imagine the houses we could have built, the businesses we could have helped, the roads we could have fixed. Imagine the futures we could have made for the people of Liverpool. And remember, the reason we have to be able to make all those futures a reality is the role of the party office. This motion is here today as a reminder that our budget problems are over. We still have another year of cuts from the three year program, and in 2017, this government will continue to reduce our funding. Just because we've managed to keep all our libraries open, all our children's centres, youth centres and leisure centres open, doesn't mean that we've solved the funding problems imposed on us by this government. Just because our economy grew faster than Manchester's last year, or that our recycling rates went up more than any other core city, or that we have the best record on homelessness, none of this means we've reached the end. none of this means we've reached the end. But only the Labour Party has managed to keep Liverpool on track. The opposition know this, so what do they do? They talk the city down and they talk the council down. They'll try to skin what are going to tell you that they're selling things off, which we aren't. They'll tell you that they're closing things down, which we're not. They will constantly criticize the way they can do with our partners. It appears from the behavior of the party's offices, there's only the Labour Party who understands the reality of the local government finance and that. I've just read the re-party amendments, and it's now clear what the opposition's strategy is going to be in May's elections. They intend to try to wipe from history the achievements of the Labour Party in Liverpool over the past five years. They will try to ignore that in spite of the deepest cuts any local authorities have to endure, Labour in Liverpool continues to deliver for its citizens. They will try to ignore the six thousand new homes that we've built, the twenty thousand jobs and apprentices we've created, the fourteen new schools already built and five hundred construction, the sixty seven acres of new improvement, green spaces that we've created. And we all know what the Lib Dem strategy will be. Let's ignore the fact that they were part of the Tory Lib Dem book and they imposed these savage cuts on our city. Let's not acknowledge the innovation that this council has carried out over the past five years, and let's just mislead residents of the selling off of green spaces. So let's see what the opposition will really abandon their petty politics and join with us on voting with this motion today. Let's see if they have enough or never to stand by that vote. Lord May, I call on all councillors to support this motion. Thank you.
Councillor Ruff?
Lord May, I think that was quite the Thomas, the speaker, when they actually said, "I'm going to be quiet now." And I asked for the logic. The Liberal Party group has not played the game of the game. We've participated in budget work parties for four years. We've supported the local budget initiatives. We produced a constructive amendment on the dairy codes, which the Labour group accepted as reflecting what the opposition put in as the ministry's straightforward. When children's services are in children's services review committing, we produced constructive comments out to the children's centres to reduce the magnitude of costs and keep them going. So to say the oppositions, which did improve, I hope it wasn't objective, because it was, it is not honest. And it's quite, and I'd ask you just to clarify that, because we are opposition party, that doesn't mean we always have to agree. We may have to agree as we do on how the local work goes. But also, we have also been quite, I think, constructive in recognizing that the parliament, I say that in a very best sense, made some very constructive changes and compromises on the opposition moves on renewal of the labour programmes effect. I think we have not deserved the criticism that was put to us in the plurality of positions. And we will continue to be constructive. We have voted when this council was tied, when there was no clear majority party on this group before we became councillor, and voted for tough measures that need to be done, like mental increases, which are not election popular, physically right of us to do. So I do take this action for that, and I think it disingred that, and it wasn't very obvious. If it was meant in that way, I hope it was a place of plural use where the single issue was.
Lord May, having this one, that's a bit, but isn't this woman prepared at the moment?
Councillor Kushner?
Thank you, my Lord May. I think the government, under the false premise that there's a requirement to make cuts to public services, assuming its own ideological position rather than being necessitated by economic demands, after all, even in the government's terms of economic growth over the last couple of years, is still intent on reducing the size of the public sector, even though the fact that the deficit is stubbornly high, which is because of the mismanagement of the economy by this chancellor, on nine separate occasions has made forecasts on the economy in terms of growth, borrowing and debt, that have been proved to be wrong in every single case, not least in the last comprehensive spending review, when its projections about growth and borrowing, which are already up to what the government predicted it should be by the end of March, is already hitting now. So if you want to look at good management of public administration, then you should look no further than this Labour administration and other Labour local authorities right across the country. Because despite the fact that we've been bending under the strain of the cuts that this government has brought in, we have managed to build houses and to maintain regeneration and improvements in our city. In my own ward in Morris, really, around a thousand new houses have been built since twenty ten. We've got new shops, we've got new services working with more young people than it was in twenty ten, twenty eleven. We've kept our library open, we've kept our children's centre open, I could go on. But nothing probably is much a sign of what this disregard the government has in terms of local authority than it's supposed to have on social care. And the reasonable suggestion that a two percent preset will solve that problem just shows how out of touch and how disrespectful we are to the needs of the most vulnerable in our community. A two percent additional preset will bring in no more than two and a half million pounds. We're facing a gap of up to forty million, if I'm correct, in the next two years that doesn't even cover the kind of resources that we need to maintain the level of care packages that we need to support those most vulnerable in our city. So I would only now agree with the motion, I would just add one thing to it, and that is that this, other local authorities to join with other Labour authorities and other authorities that want to join us in a national campaign against the impact that this government is making in terms of the effect of the cuts and what they are having on the most vulnerable people in society. Thank you.
We are amended by councillor Cole. Is it seconded? Councillor Cole?
Thank you, Lord May. We've always been very fair to the administration regarding the situation with account for finances. We've always recognized the essential government cuts that have been had in the city council, and they're not a choice of the local politicians. Furthermore, we haven't ever adopted a line that we should ignore these cuts and set legal budget, as there have been. So we've been fair and honest about our situation, and we've also been willing to acknowledge some of the achievements that have happened despite the situation. So I think the idea that we're just going to bury it in the sand and snipe from the sidelines is a bit of a bad representation. So, and whenever we put an amendment to the budget, they've always, again, recognized that the situation with account budgets, they've been checked out by the city treasurer and they would be perfectly legal amendments. So we understand the situation as it stands. And I agree that this motion, the most of the fine itself, the motion should be something we should all get behind. It should be something we could unify as representatives, absolutely, and stand strong against what's been imposed onto this city. The trouble is that there's just that little section in it which just shows that perhaps some of the intent behind it isn't entirely cured. Some of the things within that is somewhat unsubstantiated, they're also, they're a bit controversial. For example, the sixty seven acres is a thing that we haven't seen properly substantiated as yet. And we also feel that having that, that is, it kind of goes counter to the thrust of the motion. If we're showing off all the fantastic things we do despite cuts, it kind of makes the case that the cuts haven't been such a big problem for this city. We should acknowledge that the cuts have been disastrous for the city, without a people, they're unfair, and we should all be standing together for that exact reason. That's what we're sure of, that you think that this there is problematic, it's unnecessary, and we just want to look at that sort of thing and get behind the motion.
Councillor Mundy?
I'd like to oppose the amendment. And in the core of this motion is a dual strategy. We face an existential crisis in this city brought on by government cuts, and no council in the country, in the history of the last hundred years, I can recall its basis level of cuts. So maybe for this public world, it's somehow, and I, you know, I haven't always agreed with you, Steve, but I think you and your party have played a principal role in this city. I wish I could say the same with the Liberal Democrats, and I hope even at this late hour, they will start to behave well. There's two things essentially we need to do. We need to manage the council's finances well, and that means being able to be a leader. And the staggering level of challenge is enormous. I mean, the one thing we're actually shorter off than money is time. If I look at just one bit of my own portfolio, the parks, over the next year and a half, essentially, we have to move to a net zero budget for parks and protect all green spaces in the city. I think it's probably possible, and I'm certainly committed to trying to deliver that, to fund new forms of income generation, exploring new ways of organizing services and working with residents. But it's an enormous amount of work. That's just one bit of my portfolio. Another area which we've used often to mitigate the cuts is community transfers. What we see from the opposition, particularly the Greens, instead of standing up and taking responsibility for women, for all councillors or others, they try and waste our time, and that's worse than wasting the council taxpayers' money at the moment. Because this is not time spent on cheap political tricks, but time in desperate job to protect our services. So that's an important point, that I think responsible councillors, with whatever political persuasion, should be concentrating on competing to come up with the best solutions for the city, not competing to waste our time outstandingly well. In certain administrations, we're committed to work with any councillors who want to deliver our local, whether for protecting libraries, children's centres, parks and green spaces, whatever. And so in my portfolio, I'm happy to work with any councillor, if any party in the world would do that. The other point is that it's a dual strategy, because if we are to survive in this city, we need hope as well as to protect. And it is important to celebrate achievements we've made, and it's a very hard act at times, you know. So people will say, it seems to be a great, rather, we just say, "Oh, this is desperate, it's just terrible." But when you have a vampire giants or the, you know, the three queens, it's just wonderful people in this city, and you're doing, you need hope more than anything in the worst times. And, you know, I just, I am amazed that you don't really get something to celebrate, despite the cuts in building stores for the future, those new schools being built. And I think that's just fantastic, particularly for children in the city, that we're managing to build new homes, you know. I think it's sad that the Greens, the Green Party above all, should be opposed to the end of new green spaces, like York Valley Park, like coming council meetings.
Would they be, would they be great, Lord May?
Should be opposed, should be opposed to the new apartments in the Dingle. I just cannot, should be opposed to measures to improve recycling, again, again, again. It seems to me you don't sound, for principle, it seems your party should.
Councillor Mundy, can I just support? It's lovely for a moment. Councillor Cole, would you please sit down, please? I'll call you back. Could you please sit down, and then I'll call you back. Concerning the council?
Thank you, thank you, my Lord May. Even at this stage, I wish to look again, I don't think it helps a party, it certainly doesn't help the city. I will repeat, what we should be competing on as councillors is cannot be the best answers for our cities, to try and promote positive futures for the city and try and tackle the really awful problems that we have. And I'm sure we can all go hand in hand towards each other when we do it at times. You know, you've all had a rough political gout, Jack. Hold up your hands, I'm not always a nice person, you know.